Whoa.
Do you want something, or?
Dear heaven and father, we thank you for the study in the city in which we live, guided us this evening as we make our decisions. It's Christmasy. And then, this is the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of the Newnan City Council. Yeah, the minutes of the regular meeting have made the twenty-third, twenty twenty-three before y'all entertain a motion. We adopt those.
I move the approval.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. The next thing on the agenda this evening are several reports, I'm under reports from boards and commissions, or several appointments. The first one, Mr. Alexander.
Yes, sir. I'd like to renominate Ms. Teresa Lovett for another term.
Motion is second. We renominate Teresa Lovett to convention authority, three-year term. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. The next, Mr. DeBose.
I'd like to renominate Parks Avery.
Second.
Motion is second. We renominate Parks Avery to a three-year term on the convention center authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. Mr. Gion.
Next meeting, please.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Jenkins.
Ms. Yvette Jones is rolling off, so I'd like us to send her a letter thanking her for her service for all these years. And I will have to find her replacement. I have not done that yet.
Next agenda, please. Mr. Shell, that's on the next agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And Mr. Kretko.
I'm going to break the trend, and I'd like to renominate Ms. Norah Wood, please.
Second.
Good for you. Thank you. Motion is second. We renominate Norah Wood for a three-year term on the Cultural Arts Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. Mr. Alexander.
Like to renominate Ms. Allison Segler for another term.
On the Keeping Newland Beautiful Commission.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. Mr. Gion.
Next meeting, please.
Thank you. Mr. Kretko on Keeping Newland Beautiful.
Next meeting as well, please.
Thank you. Mr. Shell, next meeting.
Please.
Thank you. Mr. DeBose, Keeping Newland Beautiful.
Yes, I have Veronica Appentia.
Second.
Motion is second. We nominate Veronica Appentia for a three-year term on the Keeping Newland Beautiful Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next, Mr. Kretko. The next one, I'm sorry, will go on the next agenda, my appointment. And then the tree commission, Mr. Kretko.
Mine as well. Next agenda, please.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. The next item on the agenda this evening, reports operations by the city manager, Mr. Phillips. You have a couple of things this evening, I think.
I have a couple of items. If anyone mind, I come up to the podium here. The first item's a little quicker, so we'll actually start there. I sent out an update a couple of weeks ago about the city of Newnan having conversations with Pastor Jimmy Ellison. The pastor came to us on a couple of different occasions and talking to us about the homeless situation in Newnan. And he most recently came to the city with a proposal, I guess I would say. And the pastor would like to put together a study committee. He would like to put the study committee, for efficiency reasons, under the umbrella of the Cuida Community Foundation. He has asked the city to express support for his efforts, and actually to the point to where I would suggest that we consider entering into an agreement with the community foundation for that purpose. What Pastor Ellison desires to do is form the study committee to look at the current situation of homelessness in the city and look at the feasibility of long-term sustainable solutions. So obviously, I don't have anything in front of you tonight for action, but if it's a pleasure of this body, I would like to draft that agreement and have it in front of this body in July.
Any objection from anyone?
I don't.
Nope.
You need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. We instruct staff to draft the proposed agreement between the foundation and the city regarding homeless issues.
All right.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. Phillips, you're still in?
Yeah. Item number two is a little bit lengthier. As you know, we've been having conversations regarding recruitment, retention, pay scales, et cetera. A lot of it revolves around public safety and primarily police departments. If you pay attention to the local news, local media, you've probably read stories of cities that are, and counties, and state agencies, I can go down the list, that still struggle with recruitment, retainage, et cetera. So I want to offer and put out for discussion a phased approach to the issue here in Newnan. I think I got a quick overview. We obviously continue to see the local jurisdictions that are increasing compensation and benefit packages in a tip to recruit and retain. We've had some very close jurisdictions recently make some more changes to their pay grades. The primary target of these changes are police personnel, but we are also seeing some changes to fire personnel, and in some instances, all general government employees. So therefore, I am offering, and I'm going to present to you, a three-phase approach that I'd like to... Phase one, and I'll get to some action items and takeaways later, but I do want to go through each of these phases. For phase one, I would like to utilize existing budgeted funds, and I think that's critical to say, I'm not here tonight to ask for a budget amendment. We have funds in our budget that have been allocated that can implement this. I'd like to implement a recruiting and a retention bonus of $5,000 for each certified police officer, and I'm proposing that to be paid out over a series of installments. I believe the chief and I talked, we would agree and recommend ten installments. That's what we would certainly like to do. A little bit lesser impact, but something I think that is very important to the police and also to the fire department. Again, utilize existing budgeted funds. I'd like to begin immediately paying all their police fund and their fire fund, retirement fund dues. Those are $25 per officer, per month. Is that correct, chief? So that is phase one. And again, I want to reiterate, those would be within the allocation of the budget that this body has already approved, so I actually have the authority to implement phase one, but I didn't want to roll that out here tonight for feedback. Phase two, this is where it gets a little bit deeper, and I'm proposing phase two to be effective with the adoption of next year's budget in January. And you can see, the first part of phase two, I'm going to propose that we increase each pay grade. That's not each person, that's each pay grade, because we got different pay grades for officers, for corporals, sergeants, lieutenants, et cetera. That each pay grade be shifted increase somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000 per pay grade. Of course, we want to complete some market studies to determine exactly where it needs to fall. Then the next step is, we will review each individual officer... Let me back up a second. This is police and fire. I think I need to clarify, while phase one was the recruitment and retention bonus was for police, this is actually a proposal that would be for both police and fire. But then after the pay grade adjustment, I'm proposing that we review each police officer and fireman for a pay range increase ranging between four and 14%. Also with 2024 budget, again, I don't want to leave the general employees out, they're very vital and critical to the operation. I am not proposing that we move their pay grade to that amount, but that we, again, review individual employees for pay ranges that would range between four and eight percent for the general employees. Target number three, we've talked about this one a little bit. I would like to move forward with releasing an RFP that would solicit proposals for vendors for a defined contribution plan, a 401A plan. We've been talking about this for a while because of our pension and our pension funding and contribution status. I think we need to really dig into that and ask vendors to come and propose to us what our options would be as it relates to the 401A retirement. What we're seeing in the pension program is we have a 10-year vesting period. In today's recruitment world, a lot of people aren't interested in the 10-year vesting period. But what they are interested in is the local matches that may come alongside of a 401A. For government, it's called 401A. In the private sector, I know Councilman Shell's very familiar with this, it's called 401K. But I think we need to move down that road to examine those from a benefit standpoint from the employees. They won't have that vesting period. They'll have their money, be their money immediately, and I think it actually would be a recruiting bonus for us. Continuing with phase two, I'd like to review the feasibility of offering paid dental to all city employees and a portion of that premium for their families. Currently, dental is 100% paid for by the employee. The city doesn't contribute anything to the dental. I know it's maybe a small benefit. I think it's something that we should consider in the 24 budget. I would also like for us to review increasing the life insurance policies for all employees. The $50,000 life insurance policy, that limit has not been increased, to my knowledge, since I've been an employee at the city of Newnan. I certainly think it's time that we look at increasing that. It may be a percentage of salary, it may be an incremental increase, I'm not certain at this point in time, but I certainly would like to look at increasing that. The last bullet is not necessarily a benefit or a pay compensation issue, but it is something that has affected some of our staffing levels, and I know the chief can speak more about it, and I'm not asking us to speak about it tonight. But I do want to review our road race walks and our parade schedules. Some of the routes that we use are requiring in excess of 25, 30 police officers, public safety people, and it's becoming a little bit of a scheduling challenge. We have a lot of officers that are having to work multiple weekends. We would like to look at some options that may move some of our road races to locations that are not as intense with personnel. You know, one option may be, we move them to the link. But again, I would like to have that discussion in more detail for some potential changes, because it does create some staffing issues within our public safety and our fire department. Phase three, I don't believe, I don't know that we would have this one ready for consideration prior to the consideration of the budget, but this is something that has been talked about a long time in the city. It's something that was not really happening a lot in local government until recently. We are starting to see now, local governments are making their healthcare program available to their retirees if they have a certain amount of years of service. Now, what's happening in many of these situations, that's only up until their Medicare age. It's only the employee, and oftentimes, it is at a premium, but still, having access into our group is a great benefit to the retiree. So I would like to actually take a much further look into this, and I want to summarize. Phase one, as I said, really requires no council action, it's allocated budget. Phase two, I don't have specific costs tonight, because we got to go through the exercise, move the pay grades, review the employees, but I certainly would like to support to move forward. Same thing, I would really like to have the support to move forward with looking at our retirement, our 401A option, and also support for move forward with bringing in the necessary team and potential actuary or to help with studying the post-employment retirement healthcare benefit. So that's a summary of my proposal. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council?
I have one question, mayor.
Yes, sir.
On phase three, and I like everything you've done, and it's well deserved for our employees. We have some retirees who might retire, say, 55 or 60, and maybe they retired two or three years ago. Will they be included, or can they come back?
Yeah, I think that's what we got to look at, in the actuarial study. We got to look at where the cutoff is, where the points are. Yes, I think we got to look at it. We have to look at that. I'd like to get the advice of the actuarial team, people in the market.
Okay. Thank you.
And you know, even going back to the phase two changing, you know, there's no guarantee we're going to change from the defined benefit pension program, but I think we have to at least, we owe it to ourselves to take a look at that. And even if we do change, it doesn't mean that your vested employees get removed from the defined benefit and go into the defined contribution. There's a requirement for new hires that would go into the defined contribution. There would be an optional opt-in to the defined contribution for non-vested employees. And then there may be an option, something we got to speak with the IRS attorneys, may be that people who are vested in the pension could freeze their benefit where it is and then elect to move if they wanted to, but it would be at their election for any existing employee. I wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any, not any other questions?
I have one other question.
Go ahead.
And that's the difference in phase two between a certified police officer and firefighters. Is that more firefighters or less firefighters, or is there a way to tell us what we're covering there?
Well, obviously, we have a little over 90 certified police officers, we have about 60 certified firefighters, so we actually...
So they are certified firefighters?
Yes, yes. When I say certified, there's actually non-certified personnel in both PD and in the fire department, and they're the administration sides. So phase one, the first bullet, is the certified police officers and the certified firefighters. The other employees that are a part of the fire and the police that are not certified would fall under the second, general employee. That's correct.
Okay. That answers my question.
And I have one other, one quick question. And this is kind of, again, discussion kind of with chief and amongst staff, just to help maybe alleviate some of the, on the both the police and potentially fires, and if some departments have volunteer reserve forces, I don't know if that would even be something worth looking into, or would assist with maybe some of the manpower, both on, you know, I don't know, volunteer firefighters, volunteer reserve police officers.
You know, obviously, everything's...
Just help with some of those special events, if nothing else, just, you know...
Yeah, everything's on the table, like you said, especially when it comes to the special events. I mean, we've talked about, is there a feasibility for a part-time police officer to help with an auxiliary-type police officer, and I'm just using a term loosely.
Yep.
You know, not certain it'll happen, but I think it's, everything has to be on the table for review, correct?
Yeah. Absolutely, and I appreciate your time. It's a very comprehensive look at this. Thank you.
Okay. So, did you have a question?
Just to piggyback on what Dustin just said regarding the volunteers, and would there, certainly would appear to me that there'd be additional liabilities to the city and to the police department if you brought on non-certified, and so that has to be taken into consideration, would that be fair to say?
Yeah, it used to be, and if you've been attending our events for years, it used to be that most of the barricades and the road closures were manned by volunteers, and it did create some issues. So we have over the last, what, five or six years, started staffing those with our certified officers.
Okay. If there are any other questions, then, phase one, as you mentioned a couple of times, he does not need approval there. I would need a motion, though, for consensus for staff to move forward with the bullet points in phase two and phase three.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Good job.
I will ask the gentleman if he'll remove his hat in council chambers, we appreciate that very much. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is mine, I don't have anything this evening. Under new business, public hearing, this is an application for alcohol beverage licenses. BJ's Wholesale Club, the reason for this is personnel change. This is a public hearing, and I'll open at this time and ask if there's anyone who wants to come forward to speak to this issue of the alcohol business, beverage license at BJ. Reason, personnel. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and ask if everything is in order. Is there a representative here today from BJ?
Yes.
You are here. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. I'll ask for a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is a second. We approve the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. The next is also a public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing at this time on the issue of the demolition request of 24 Birch Avenue. Mr. Stevenson, how are you today?
I'm fine, mayor. Good evening, mayor and council.
Yes, sir. Before you is the request by the owner of 24 Birch Avenue to demolish the house on the lot. The owner is Cuida Force, and they have properly advertised and notified the surrounding owners in accordance with the city ordinance. As you can see from item A there, on the submittal, the structure's not located in historical district, and is considered non-contributing to the architectural significance of the city of Newnan, according to the historical survey that was conducted in 2001.
All right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the issue of public hearing? This is a public hearing on the demolition request of 24 Birch Avenue. All right. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from council.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. We grant the request for the demolition of 24 Birch Avenue. Any discussion?
I do. I have a question. What condition is this building in?
The condition is, as you can see from the photos, it's not in a great condition. I don't know the exact condition of the property, and I don't know if there's anyone here that can address that.
I know it had a new roof put on it after the tornado, so I was just kind of concerned about what the plans are. It's a residential neighborhood, and it was owned by Force, and I know that the Cowie de Force representative is here, and I'd really appreciate...
Okay, so maybe they can address that.
Yeah.
Attempted to make contact, but I've not been able to. Is anyone here from Cuida Force?
Yes. If you could come forward and state your name, please.
Good evening. My name's Hank Arnold. I'm the founder and director of Cowie de Force.
So I asked, thank you for being here.
Yes.
I asked some questions about the condition of the building and what your intentions are. This is a residential neighborhood, and though it is not a nationally recognized neighborhood yet, we have applied for that status. So there is some significance to the neighborhood, and I don't know where, or I guess the survey you took was in 2001, but we've done more recent work to get it applied for the National Register. So I'm just trying to figure out here what's going on.
So, we donated the property in May of 2020, and we originally wanted to renovate the property, but we had a structural engineer come out, check out the foundation, and it's just in such poor shape that it would cost a lot more money than the structures were to repair it. So we were originally interested in keeping it original. So it's just in such poor shape. Our plans with the property is to put a duplex on the property, single-family occupancy duplex, and that is to follow after the demolition permit that we'd be applying for a building permit in July. So the current shape of the structure is in really poor shape. It's had several additions done without permit and a lot of work done without permit, so there's, it's tough, because we wanted to renovate, but we weren't able to, just because of the cost.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The only other question I have is that since, I think it was last meeting, I brought up the certificate of appropriateness that would need to go in if we had duplexes built in our historic neighborhoods, since this is not a neighborhood that's part of our local registered districts, does that apply to this property?
I know that last...
Staff can answer that one.
Sorry.
Thanks.
So I believe Hank approached planning zone, you want to say?
Currently, that certificate of appropriate process only applies to national registered districts that have been approved. This one has not, so it does not apply at this time. If you wanted a condition that it did have to get a COA before planning commission, that could be something that you have them go through.
I would appreciate it.
I think that's a good idea. I'd like to know what's going to go on the property before I agree to take something out.
Who made the motion?
I did. That would be mine.
And second?
Second.
Second. I told you, yeah.
Okay. So I have an amended motion that includes the COA process coming back for the planning commission, Ms. Donovan, to show what you're going to build on the property as a duplex as a condition of the demolition.
Okay.
Everybody?
Yep.
Any other questions?
Just one quick question. You said about duplex, you intend to like sell it and have it owner occupied, or is this going to be rented from the force?
It'll be rented from our organization.
Okay.
Okay. I have a motion is second, only amended motion. Any discussion? You know, the questions, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a 2021 budget amendment, year-end audit process, that you have this... Good evening.
Good evening. I'm good.
Good. Good to see you.
She's on it.
Here we go.
Okay, I'd like to ask for council approval to amend the 2021 budget by nine million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That over budget items are tornado expenses, of course, and then the purchase of coal tanks properties, a couple of small lots on Murray Street, Link, and Pickleball, Silti. I have put in, in your documents, line items, departments that were over. And if you want to discuss in further detail, I'd be happy to, if you want to stop by and we'll go over the nitty-gritty, I'd be happy to do that with you.
Any questions, Ms. Hall? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second that we adopt the budget amendment for 2021 as presented. Any questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate that. The next is a consideration of the Second Amendment to the MEAG solar power agreement. This is being brought to us by Noon Utilities, and it is a reflection of the fact that MEAG had a hiccup in the first contract, and this is an amendment to rectify that. So I would ask a motion in favor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the Second Amendment to the MEAG solar power agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. This next is a consideration of a resolution to appoint the 2023 MEAG Power Annual Election Voting Delegates. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion?
You got to pick somebody.
Pardon me?
Is it still going to be George and Rose?
Yes.
Yeah.
I accept.
I was looking for us to pick somebody.
I accept. I've never got to vote yet. George always shows up.
Thought that, unless we, I thought the way the MEAG did it, unless we changed, we'd stay the same.
You don't. You don't have to do the resolution.
We don't even have to do the resolution unless we change. That's correct. But in this case, it will be George Alexander and Rochelle as the alternate. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. Okay, the next item is for information only. This is a rezoning request, RZ 2023-02 by LDO Cowie de LLC, thirty-five point four-nine acres, located on thirty, I mean, yes, located at 2037 Noon Crossing Bypass. Requested zoning for RS-15 to RMH, or RM, yes, RMH. This is multifamily, higher density, and as I said earlier, this is for information only. This will be presented to the planning commission at future date. The next item on the agenda tonight on the second page is a consideration of construction contract award of the budget and funding and our planning and zoning renovations and upstairs in this building.
Mayor, any member to the council? Thank you. I hope you are. This project reflects the city's desire to renovate and build out five dedicated office spaces in what we are now, you guys know, is our planning and zoning suite to accommodate two staff members. We put the proposal out, the invitation to bid out, received one proposal from a qualified firm, Tomco, who's worked in this building before. And the recommendation is that we approve, the council considered, approve the proposal as submitted. In addition, staff has put together a budget to fully outfit with new furniture fixture and equipment and a small contingency in there. So there's two items here. One is to award the contract to Tomco, and the second is to approve the budget as shown in your package.
So do you have any questions? Have a motion with those, those two items?
So moved.
Motion is second. Motion is second with the two items indicated by Mr. Kramer. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The next is consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between Cowie de County, the city of Nunnan, and other qualified municipalities of Cowie de County for the purposes of identifying project cost estimates and other items for the upcoming SLOSS referendum. Are there any questions on this issue? It's very straightforward. Is there a motion?
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you. The next is a consideration of a resolution setting a date for the general election and qualification period for candidates in the 2023 general election. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Motion is second. We adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion? Your second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next is a consideration of a resolution appointing an election superintendent for the 2023 general election. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the resolution appointing an election superintendent for the 2023 general election. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. Ms. Donovan, I guess, has the next item. Discussion on holding work sessions for rezoning and annexation cases. If you'll remember correctly, we have discussed this, even discussed it down in Thomasville, I believe, at our ABL work session there. The question here, of course, is how, the issue was brought up because there were some council members who were concerned that we were not being given enough time in order to hear from developers or the applicants in rezoning and annexation requests. And Ms. Donovan and staff have done a great job of coming up with, you know, it's in your, it's in your agenda, so we won't go back and reread that. But the one item that's there, that's kind of not there, is whether or not we just want to extend the amount of time during the hearing itself from, say, fifteen minutes to thirty minutes? Or does the council want to go into a process where they have a separate meeting and allow the developer to come in? And it's mostly staff-driven based on what you have here. The staff would make the presentation, but the developer would be in attendance, would be one of the options so that the council could ask questions. And it came up with a couple of scenarios of when those meetings would happen. So, yeah, that's, have I stolen your report?
No, that sounds perfect, and we just, thank you for that.
I just started talking and I couldn't stop. I mean, if you've got another option there for us, it's just up to the council, how you want to be presented the information. You want to do it.
I know that when I get it, it's a Thursday or Friday, and it's Tuesday when we do it. And of course, most of the time I'm available, sometimes I'm not, but I feel like that night, we don't, we just hear it for the first time. And let's just say it's a little small tract of land that's going from commercial to industrial. Well, that's simple. But when you get some of these little complicated ones, I don't feel like I have enough time to hear what the developer says, go back and look at it again, and then make an honest, reasonable decision. That's what I've seen. I don't know the answer totally, but I just know that it seemed like during that meeting is not enough time to really dig in. Once you read it once and you hear it once, but it's still not enough time. And anybody else feels about that, but that's what I feel.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need more time. And I have, you know, especially when we have so many questions coming from audience members and other things that come up as we're looking at whatever they're presenting to us. Because sometimes we get revised versions, right, and, you know, not too long for the thing. And I think that having enough time to digest that, not necessarily a longer meeting and a longer time to hear it, but some time to think about it between first blush at it and our decision.
And I don't want to hold somebody up, you know, you talk about two weeks between meetings at least, but I mean, I don't, I don't want a third meeting in the middle of it. I know that.
Well, I mean, we try to help, we try to hold those meetings at night so that anyone who's working can attend the meeting, but if you have, so if you have one and then you want to take a pause before you vote again, it could be a month away.
That's what I'm saying. I don't want to delay it too much more.
That's unreasonable delay.
So the planning commission, how much time between when the planning commission sees it and makes a vote and we get it?
So the planning commission will hear it on the second Tuesday of the month, and you all hear it on the following month at your night meeting. So there's about six weeks.
Fourth Tuesday. They hear it on the second?
They hear it the second of the month prior to yours. So they'll hear it in June, and you will hear it in July.
Six weeks between the planning commission and time we get it.
Yes.
If we could shorten, if they've already made a vote, can we shorten the time till we first hear it? And then have that, instead of six weeks total before we hear it, have that be part of the six weeks?
Ms. Sears, from the legal aspect of this, what does the law tell us we have to do?
Yeah, the problem is you have to run your ad, all right? If you're going to hold a second public hearing before council. And that ad has to run no less than fifteen nor more than forty-five days before the meeting. So when we made the concerted effort or decision to move all rezonings to the night meeting, that created the delay from when the planning commission hears it to when you hear it. Because like you say, it's six weeks. With the way the newspaper comes out, before you run, you would have to start running ads before anybody voted on it. Now, before you said, you said to keep before we voted on it, we could hear it without voting? Would that be possible? Oh, well, you can, but you still got to hold the hearing. I understand that, but if we, if we see it and talk about it, I don't know whether it's a public hearing or whether we just have the people making the presentation up there and explaining to us the first time, and then we have the public hearing. So I'm saying, if you take that six weeks period you're talking about and you shorten the time before we get it, and yet you still have your vote, everything runs the same as far as the true vote. We could hear it ahead of time, or at least. Oh, you can delay the vote anytime you want. I mean, you've done that. I'm not talking about delaying the vote. I'm talking about seeing it sooner. We see it. Well, you would have to change your meeting, that is what I'm saying.
Isn't that the proposal?
So, so if the planning commission heard it on the second Tuesday of whatever month, could it be presented to the city council in a work session on the, at our fourth, at our next meeting?
Sure.
No, no public hearing, information only, work session, two weeks later is presented to us. And then we hold a public meeting a month later to vote?
With the presentation again.
Pardon me?
I mean, you could do it. If you wanted to hold the work session at your night meeting, your second meeting of the month, or if you wanted to hold the work session at your afternoon meeting on the first of the month, you could do that. And then hold your public hearing like you normally do, which would be on the. That would, to me, at least we would see it and know what we're looking at two weeks ahead of time or a month ahead of time. I think that's what we anticipate.
That was the option.
Is that y'all, if you wanted to stay late at the second night meeting, but that's usually when you're doing the rezonings and all, on your hearings. And so what we were thinking, I think, that we had talked about was at your afternoon meeting on the first meeting of the month, having it.
Yeah.
Okay, now, that doesn't work. Kind of during the summer when you're only having one meeting. And it's a night meeting. If you do that, all right, so that would be a month after the planning commission first heard it. And then we would have two weeks before it actually has the public here. Correct. And that wouldn't change anything other than they have to bring in. That gives Tracy plenty of time to do the advertising within the required period. That works better for me. At least we got a chance to dig into it a little bit quicker.
And Mr. Sears brings up the point that obviously in June and July, we have just one meeting, so council would have to be willing to have a call meeting for a work session.
If it falls in, in what, December?
If we in fact had a rezoning or an annexation in May or January.
Let's go back. All right, so we have one meeting in June and July, right? And December.
And in December.
December, okay. But what, what would happen right now if we hadn't changed anything? When would we hear it? Today? Well, you would, because of the way you kind of moved your meetings, if the planning commission hears it at its November meeting, there's still enough time to fit within the fifteen forty-five that you can hear it at your December meeting. This is the second. And I think what the mayor's saying is you would have to, if you wanted to have a work session, you'd have to have a call meeting.
If we adopted this as a policy, you'd have to have a work session.
Why would you have, I'm not sure why you have to have a work session every time.
You're asking to be aware of the.
If they voted on one in May, when would we have heard it heard? June.
You'll hear it in June.
June, your meeting in June. Today. Because you normally meet, you don't meet on the. So in that case, we, so it's only four weeks, not six weeks. Normally. Huh? Normally. Now, if you, I think this past year, didn't they move the meeting up?
Yeah.
Now, you moved the meeting up this past year, and we may not have had enough days to have. It's, it could, it's only three times it can occur, and it may or may not occur if there's no application. And it may not, may or may not occur if there's no, if there's the right timeframes following. So it's only two special meetings probably a year.
Or if they're not in an impending hurry, they just wait till every meeting.
That's.
But.
Maybe not, though.
I'm just pointing out what.
I know, the council is agreeing to. I understand.
Okay.
If it gets to be a hinters, we'll change back.
Well, I don't, and I don't think we, I don't, I wouldn't advise if we make a decision on it tonight. That can't, that staff would take back what they're hearing, that our preference would be, and bring it back to us and something that's.
Can you bring us a chart with a, assuming that you have an application that comes to us like today, and we forward to the planning commission? Give a timeframe for every, and then take into account the November, the Decembers, the Janes, the Julias, and what would happen if you had an application? Can we see that chart?
Sure. Yes, sir, I can bring it.
Would that work?
I'll bring back planning commission dates and council dates and when you all would get to hear it versus when they would.
I mean, some offices is going to be boom, 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 but some offices are a little different.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
I have two, just real fast.
Yeah.
Is, I just want to make sure that, like, say, say we do the work session, we hear the, from the developer and all, you know, the proposal. I just want to ensure that, because that would maybe, by the, what your recommendation would be in the afternoon meeting, that the present, presentation, and I hate to sound, you know, the redundancy of it all, but so that the public could hear it at a regularly scheduled meeting, having the presentation again, maybe, maybe not necessarily having to hear the staff report and all that stuff again, or having a shortened abbreviated version of it.
Staff reports got to be read into the public hearing.
Okay, that's right. And then the other part of that is, would this, creating a work session create an undue burden for the development side of that as well? Because it'd be one more meeting, potentially, where they're coming down.
I mean, you're, ask somebody right there. Instead of presenting, but you've already done all the groundwork, and you may have to come up here and talk about fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, but it's not an over burden on them, and they're trying to get something done, and we're trying to speed up and make the process easier and better.
And they probably would like to address comments you have before they get in the night of the meeting. That probably would find that helpful.
It would not be a burden on someone who wanted to get something done.
Exactly.
That's correct.
Okay. So a motion to instruct staff to bring back some pictures in a graph?
So moved.
Charts.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Anything else on this? Everybody good?
No.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carried. Under unfinished business, I've got to recuse myself on this item. Mayor Protem Corretko will take it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, for unfinished business, try to get to that page real quick fast. All right, so this is, where did it go? Yeah, there we go. This is the second final reading, the rezoning request, RZ 2023, Tag 01, Freedom Landholdings LLC, five point eight-two acres, located Old Atlanta Highway. This is just a second reading. is just a second reading. Do I have a motion to approve the?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The next item on the agenda tonight is actually visitors. This is a request from Damian Wilson of Phantom Fireworks to extend business hours. Council has this letter before you. Comments on his request. I believe he has signed the sheet. He is here tonight. If you have any questions of Mr. Wilson. What hours, what hours will he? Mr. Wilson, if you, I'm sorry, Mr. Sears.
I spoke to the attorney for the thing late this afternoon. As I understand, this is, situation is governed under state law and so it, the hours are governed by state law, not by what's in our ordinance. All right, which was some confusion on that. So we'll work with them in the morning to make sure that they're doing the proper thing.
So we are, this is a no action needed item.
No action needed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sears. We appreciate that. The next item on the agenda would be, we don't have any executive session?
No.
Is anyone here off agenda that needs anything to say? Anything from council?
Happy Flag Day.
Yes, absolutely. Entertainer motion to adjourn? Anyone?
So moved.
I'm sorry. Did you have something off agenda?
Well, originally it was part of the rezoning, but I was under the impression that that was going through twice because it wasn't a, yeah, I was curious why you were supposed to say it, but I understand now. But I still would like more of my remarks to be heard because I should have made these last.
Well, I can't speak to that, Mr. Corretco, because I recuse myself, but Mr. Corretco will explain, you know, the.
No, no worries about the explanation. I just at least want, I understand that now. I'm learning the politics behind the politics, but I still would like to at least have my words heard.
Well, sir, generally, and I appreciate your coming and taking the time to come and having your words heard. Generally speaking, though, and as per our agenda, we allow folks to speak for any items that have not already been previously addressed. Because that's been addressed in the agenda, we don't usually allow that for open session. And that's, that's the, that's the reason why, because otherwise it could turn into a rather large.
Rules are rules. I understand.
So, but thank you for coming.
Okay, anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion is second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed like sign. Thank you for being here, ladies and gentlemen.